It is now seven P M. Welcome to the Monday, July seventh, twenty twenty five Town Council meeting. Our meeting this evening will be broadcast live on the town of Double Oak YouTube channel. Once on the channel, please click on the live button. Out of respect for those in attendance, please refrain from talking to other members of the audience during the meeting and silence electronic devices while in the Cook Wilkinson Community Government Room. And if we could possibly any keep from any outbursts. Everybody did great the last meeting. We had a couple of little uproars, but I don't think that's going to be a problem tonight. So I'm not even going to bother talking about that. So I'm going to go ahead and ask the Town Secretary Lynn Jones to please call the rule.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Willen?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Dietrich?
Here.
Mr. Gorton?
Here.
Dr. Farfaro?
Here.
Janet Robertson. We have a call.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Dietrich will now lead us in an invocation.
God of understanding and guidance, we stand before you at a time of disagreement seeking clarity, wisdom, and respect. As we deliberate our future of our town, may our words be measured, our hearts be open, and our intentions be rooted in service to the greater good. Grant us the patience to listen beyond our own perspectives and humility to consider differing views and the strength to work towards solutions that reflect fairness and insight. May compromise not feel like defeat, but a step towards shared prosperity. Where tensions arise, let peace take hold or uncertainty clouds judgment bring discernment. And in all discussions, may we remember that we are all stewards of this place, responsible not just for today, but for the generations that will come after us. Amen.
Thank you. Will you please rise? Mike, Councilperson Gorton is going to lead us in the pledges, but before we do the pledge, we will take a moment of silence for the victims of the Texas flooding. So if you please rise. Thank you. Mike?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Appreciate everybody being here this evening. I know it's summertime and lots of folks are on vacation from the holiday weekend, so thank you for being online and here with us this evening. We're going to move right into the meeting. So item two is citizen comments, non-agenda subjects. The next segment of the council meeting is intended for citizen comment on any subject except those that appear on the agenda. Those citizens wishing to address an agenda item will be recognized at the appropriate time. Any citizen comments at this time will not receive any verbal council response, nor must the citizen expect any discourse with the mayor or any other council member. This is a procedural rule, not intended to convey a lack of interest or discourtesy, but rather to provide time for all citizens to speak and to move on to the new business of the council. As a reminder, all town council proceedings, including citizen comments, are recorded for record-keeping purposes. We have a couple of folks who signed up for non-agenda items tonight. If you would please come up to the podium and identify yourself with your name and your address. Sterling, is it Caraway or Cardway? Okay, I'm sorry about that.
I'm here to ask if going forward, it would be possible to livestream the
Oh, I'm sorry, your address. I'm sorry, ma'am. Okay, sure.
I'd like to request that going forward that planning and zoning and board adjustment meetings be livestreamed along with these town councils. So that people are on vacation, they can see, watch, and watch the subsequent.
Thank you. Don Mills?
Hello, my name is Don Mills. I reside at one twenty four St. George in Double Oak. I've been there since nineteen ninety six. I wish to address this upcoming zoning proposal change for a helipad in Double Oak. Couple of points. First, this is just going to benefit one individual. This is not going to benefit town of Double Oak whatsoever. Two, opening this door by granting this application for a zoning change will open the door for anyone else who wants to put a helipad. Those people come in and say, well, he's got a helipad, I want a helipad. Are you then going to selectively grant helipad applications? No, because you'll be bound to do what's fair. Fair would mean if you grant it for one, you gotta grant it for all. That is not what we need at Double Oak. Helipad in Double Oak is going to bring low-flying helicopter traffic in. That's going to scare horses, dogs. It's going to be loud. There's no actual control there that Double Oak has on wind, how often that helicopter comes in and lands. There's no air traffic control there. You granting a helicopter, one helicopter, to try to come in low over a residential subdivision. We're a residential subdivision, not a heli. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda is consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the town council, will be enacted by in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests in which the event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Information concerning consent agenda items is available for public review. Counsel, this evening, we have one item discussed, consider and act on the minutes of the June sixteenth, twenty twenty five Town Council meeting. Counsel, are there any corrections to the minutes?
No.
No.
Are there any questions about the minutes?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the council consent agenda items?
I move that we approve the consent agenda items.
Is there a second?
Aye, second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Willen and a second by Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Dietrich. Lynn, can you please call the vote?
Ms. Willen?
Aye.
Dr. Kay?
Aye.
Mr. Gorton?
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda passes. Thank you. Moving on to item four, Mayor Council Members and Staff Reports. So I'm just going to go ahead and start over here at the far left and come around. So Dr. Kay, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Just that I've been getting a lot of emails and I really appreciate the town involvement. And I hope that I can get more emails like that about other issues about this town, especially things like Eden Ranch and anything else. And I'd love to just hear the input that the citizens have for all sorts of things that go on in our town. So just wanted to let everyone know that.
Okay, thank you. Councilperson Gorton?
Yeah, so I posted once on social media relating to all the fear mongering and lies about the property on two fifty seven, two fifty Simmons Road. My post was to former Mayor Donley and saying to him, "Former Mayor Donley, you know better." He was trying to make you think that the mayor, the council, the staff, the Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department are trying to hide something from the residents of Double Oak. To accuse the mayor, council, staff, and Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department, Fire Chief, that they should have informed the town residents is not being honest. The former mayor knows that people come to the town and ask questions all the time about property they want to purchase. They will meet the mayor and the town administrator and the others, and they will determine what they need to do to replat and rezone or even submit a special use permit. They may even fill out a P and Z application, but never get to the point of a public hearing. If the mayor and town administrator matters kept up with, kept the town up, informed on every meeting they had, there'd be nothing else they do. And former Mayor Donley knows better. As for the town council, most of us heard about the property at two fifty Simmons Road was being purchased, and they may want to replat or rezone the property. This is not the first time buyers have looked at it and talked about this property. Town council has no say in a replat, rezone, or even a special use permit until P and Z have a hearing and make a recommendation. After the recommendation, the town council will have a public hearing on July seventh. Some of these dates are going to be a little old because this post happened back on June sometime. On July seventh and during the town council meeting, the town council will vote to accept or deny the recommendation. The mayor has no vote. The council has five. I have not heard from any council person say publicly that they would vote for or against because they have not heard all the facts. As for the town council agenda on Monday, June sixteenth, yes, there is no agenda about the two fifty Simmons Road. Why have a public hearing on replat zoning and special use permit for a helicopter landing when we don't know all the facts and can't know all the facts until there is a P and Z hearing? You can come to the meeting, that's why I said people can come to the meeting, and former mayor inferred that P and Z should have let the town residents know something was going on. And the meeting of May eighth is, and should let, the P and Z should have let us know on the meeting of May eighth. This is wrong, and he knows better. P and Z did not have all the information relating to the two fifty Simmons. The hearing on July first is for three items. A subdivision of two fifty Simmons Road into five separate lots, a rezone from A one to A two, a specific use permit for a helicopter landing. The application was filed this past week in three items, and the hearing is set for July first. I wish Donley was as concerned about when he was mayor and council, and council, when council misrepresented three hundred thousand dollars of our tax dollars. Seems to me that a lot of fear mongering is going on with little or no facts and with a lot of speculation. And we all want to keep Double Oak, Double Oak, but until we have all the facts, we should stop jumping to all the speculations and possibly false conclusion, and that's why we have public hearings. Mayor Johnson on June sixteenth made a statement, and most of the people have left and didn't hear it. And so we're going to play that part of the video right now.
All right, item four, Mayor Council Members and Staff Reports. First up on the agenda is mayor and council statement. So if you'll give me the opportunity to go first, I usually let y'all, I'm going to go ahead and make a statement. So this has to do with the hella, whatever we want to call it, because multiple people have called it different things. So throughout this process, the town attorney has been consulted and has provided legal guidance to town staff and officials to ensure that all procedural steps, including public notifications, document filings, and meeting schedules are carried out in full compliance with applicable laws and local ordinances. The legal oversight ensures the integrity of the process and protects the rights of both the applicant and the residents of Double Oak. I'd like to acknowledge that many citizens who have reached out to share their views regarding the proposed heliport application near Simmons Road, your engagement is appreciated, and I want to emphasize that the matter is at the very beginning of the formal land use review process. As noted in a recent article in the Cross Timbers Gazette, the applicant is requesting a special use permit for a private heli stop on a fifteen acre residential property, primarily for limited travel and potential emergency use, potential. The article highlighted both support and opposition in the community, and I want to assure everyone that the town's process is designed to carefully and thoroughly evaluate such requests. So it doesn't matter that this is a special use permit for a heliport. It could be a large facility to house chickens. The point is, is that a citizen or a new citizen has come to the town hall to inquire about the what-if of doing something. Now, we can set up at the town hall and tell everybody no, which is kind of what was done in the past. But instead, we feel, I feel as the mayor, it's my responsibility to listen to both sides and all sides of anything that any citizen would bring up here. Now, of course, if it's ludicrous, or if it doesn't match up or meet some requirement, I want to put fourteen houses on my one acre lot. Well, we all know this is a one acre town, okay? It's also my understanding that there were conversations previous about heli stops or heli ports in the past, but no town councils did anything about rewriting or writing ordinances against it. To clarify the timeline, while the initial planning and zoning application was dated April fourteenth, twenty twenty five, the final replot document, which is required to formally trigger a zoning
All right, and the video goes on, and Mayor Johnson did a great job of outlining everything that was supposed to go on. There's some takeaways from the video. Takeaway number one, attorneys have been consulted and provided legal guidance to the town staff and officials. Because of the Freedom of Information Act and other requests, it will cost the town thousands of dollars to pay the attorneys. Money which could have been used for the local volunteer fire department, for police, for roads, for drainage, for other things than attorneys fee. What a misspent of our tax dollars. Takeaway number two, mayor said he wanted to assure everyone that the town's process is designed to carefully and thoroughly evaluate such requests. Mayor Donley knew this, but he chose to rile people up into fear mongering and even outright misleading the truth. The mayor, P and Z, and the staff and the council are just following the process. Citizens, takeaway number three, citizens come to the town hall to inquire about what ifs or doing something. Now, we can set up here, and this is him saying this, at the town and tell everyone no, which is kind of what they've done in the past, but instead, I feel the mayor, it's the mayor and it's his responsibility to listen to both sides and all sides of everything. This goes back to what I said earlier. If the mayor and town administrator and others kept town informed of every meeting they had, nothing else would be done. Takeaway number four, instead of, the mayor said, instead of shutting things off, we decided to listen. We decided to go to, let the citizens come to the town through the proper process and do what citizens can do. No strings, no deals, no nothing. As mayor, he said, I want to clearly state that I have not taken a position on this application. I respect the independence of both the planning and zoning in the town council and will not influence or interfere with their review, deliberation, or decision-making on this matter. It is critical the process remain fair, impartial, and fully guided by the town's ordinances and the input from our residents. Last thing I have, just a little bit more, is that I made that one post on Facebook. I haven't made another post since. And so I'm going to go down here and respond to a few of these posts. So Ms. Burrow says, in case you haven't seen the latest post, there is no P and Z meeting tonight because of all the hard work by so many people, so many of you, you know who you are. We succeeded in keeping our town government honest to a point. My response, since Mayor Johnson has been on the council and now is mayor, as mayor, the Double Oak government has been honest. Was Double Oak government honest before Mayor Johnson? We'll figure that out in the future. Post also by Mike Donley, if our town five council members had known what was going on and being discussed for months, they would have had an earlier opportunity to inform the citizens and state their position on the helicopter public use portion in private, public helicopter, aircraft, aviation private. Mr. Donley knows better. This is not true. Council could not, should not, state their opinion until P and Z made their recommendations. We have to follow process. Mr. Donley again, what is weird to me about this is that none of the council members seem upset that they have been kept in the dark. Maybe they are upset, not knowing, but just didn't say so. Myself and I, and I know a lot of former council members, over twenty year plus years, who would be madder than hornets if they weren't made aware of a helipad being discussed by the town officials. Council was not ever kept in the dark. This is fear mongering. We have to follow the process. Mike Donley again, Double Oak town government has had applications, documents, and records for specific use permits since April fourteenth. There have been three town council meetings, May fourth, May nineteenth, June second, where the town administrator, the mayor, or any other five council member should have informed the town citizens that the town government had received a specific use application for helicopter landing at two fifty Simmons Road. It is known, it is known that the Double Oak Volunteer Fire Chief and that the Double Oak Volunteer Department has been engaged in discussing and meeting with town officials about the helipad. Double Oak Volunteer Fire Chief has not told his residents anything about the department's application in meetings regarding the helipad. There was a planning and zoning meeting on May eighth, twenty twenty five, this is still Mr. Donley commenting, on May eighth, twenty twenty five, and the chairman nor the commissioners mentioned that the specific use application for the helipad landing had been submitted to the town in April and would be coming in future P and Z and town council meetings. There's a little bit more on this post, but I want to respond to that process there. There is, we have to follow the process. And then Donley continued on his post. There are more documents and files to go through based on what I've read and seen so far, the town development process for the heliport landing, H U P, has been tainted and dark clouds hover over this. The mayor and the planning and zoning chairman must excuse themselves immediately and do not participate in the vote. Their involvement, as shown in these documents, appears to be, has crossed the line of neutrality and has cast a shadow of untrust upon the town council members and the planning and zoning. That's the end of this post, and this is my response. This post is disrespectful to several people. We should not beset people. Andrew Weaver has a long distinguished career in the military. The police chief has a long and distinguished career as a police officer. The Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department chief has a long and distinguished career as a firefighter. The mayor has no vote. The council and P and Z must follow the process. And finally, the Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department's annual Fourth of July celebration was a couple days ago. I loved the parade so much that I wrote it. I wasn't supposed to. I had medical advice telling me not to ride. I'm not the smartest person in the world, but I do what I like. I had strict rules, no waving, no throwing candy. And you want to talk about the wrong kind of noise? Politizing the parade is the wrong kind of noise. We can have all our disagreements politically, but when it comes to us as a town celebrating Easter, Christmas, and the Fourth, politics should not be part of the celebration. Those who organize a protest during the parade should be ashamed of themselves.
All right. Thank you, Mike. Deputy Mayor Pro Tem?
I was saying, the Fourth of July parade, I think what a great success. Thank you for everybody that participated in that. It was a little bit lower of a turnout than normal, but that's expected on a Friday long weekend, Fourth of July. But I think there was a huge crowd considering that it was on a Friday of a holiday weekend. So thank you, everybody, for coming and participating and rest your arms from throwing all that candy. And the kids are still spinning down from that sugar high, I'm sure.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you. I also had a great time at the Fourth of July parade, so thank you so much for putting it on for this town. The Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department, we really appreciate everything that you do. The other thing I wanted to bring up to the residents is if you want to see the state laws that are governing this whole laws that are governing this whole process, that would be Local Government Code two-one-two, which is called Municipal Regulations of Subdivisions and Property Development. In there, it states timelines by when we must hold hearings, because I don't think the mayor actually said that in any of his statements, that they are state required by a certain date. That's why the July first, because I got a lot of questions on, why are you rushing it through? We have to finish the process within thirty days of the full application being submitted. And then the town council has to act upon the planning, that's for planning and zoning, then the town council has to act upon the planning and zoning recommendation within thirty days of them making a recommendation or coming up with it. So we are bound by time periods. If we don't follow those, some of this could automatically happen without us saying yes or no. That's what you have to understand. That is the government code. Again, you can go look at it. And I also want to mention that in this last state legislature, there were five to eight bills trying to limit towns and cities' ability to govern planning and zoning and to govern our own rules and regulations. One of them did pass, which actually takes these time limits down on the amount, it doesn't come into effect until September first for residential. But we have to follow these because they're watching. The state government and the state legislature is watching, and they want to take away more and more of our rights as towns to limit the size of our lots, what can be done on our lots, and that's something that Double Oak does not want to happen. So that's why we're following these rules and regulations. You can go out and read the Local Government Code on yourself. In particular, the beginning of it talks about platting, but you can go down to Section E, which talks about some other things that people have called for, which are against the law.
Thank you. All right, I'll be brief. First and foremost, thank you, council, for all the comments. Mike, thank you for the support. I had no idea what Mike was going to say or do today because that's the way we work here at the council. We don't intermingle, nor do we influence each other. So thank you very much for that. Pat as well. I too enjoyed the Fourth of July celebration, and I got to do it in a different way. They actually let me volunteer. I'm not sure if I'll get asked back. I hope I do. But my wife and I, Mary, enjoyed it. My daughter Kelly worked with the Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department on a booth called Vial of Life. I don't know if I'm saying that right. And if you're interested in that, please contact the chief. We can follow back up with you. It has to do with what the chief spoke about a couple meetings ago in regards to when they arrive at your location and what types of end-of-life statements that you've created or made, knowing that they have those there available. So I think it's worthwhile, if you haven't thought about that, to think about it. So chief, kudos to retired chief and all the staff and all the other chiefs and captains. Great job. I had so many people come up to me and talk real positive about how much they enjoyed it, so thank you very much. All right, we're going to continue and move on here, so we're going to move into Public Works, Code Enforcement.
Just a quick update. I'm waiting just to get the final last quote for our crack seal program, so I promised to get that to you guys soon. Also, I had a meeting last week with Republic Trash just for the council's edification. We initially had a ten-year agreement. Technically, it was two five-year agreements. The end of that fifth year is the end of October, I'm sorry, the beginning of October. So met with Republic about transitioning for the next five years. They will be bringing a proposal to council soon, but just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And finally, I'm having a meeting tomorrow with Datamax. We meet with them quarterly to go over all of our IT issues, and so I'll be meeting with them tomorrow on that.
Do you think there's going to be a change in the Republic Trash? Probably will be money. I'm just taking that for granted, but will there be any other changes?
We're waiting to see. They really didn't get very specific on it. I just said, we need a four, we talked it general out, general, can't say that word, in general terms.
Okay.
And they're going to be providing us with a formal proposal within the next week or so.
I'm going to put in my two cents right now. You get one dump a month as a Double Oak residence. Doesn't matter if you take them all twelve in the first month, or you take all twelve at the end. And it's amazing how beneficial that is to keeping our properties clean, so.
I have a question. I have a question for you on that also. Do we look at other waste management companies just to make sure we're getting the best deal?
I've been in contact with, I know Bartonville just went to a new trash company, got a copy of their contract so I could kind of make sure that we're in the right ballpark and all that, and that's part of my homework is what I'm doing.
All right, we're going to move on to administration. I'll just run right down the line.
No problem. I'll let Laura take this one. She's been very busy with a lot of projects.
So Laura?
I've been working on a lot of budget preparation, so I've been gathering reports and putting together some data and some numbers for Chris so that we're ready to go with our budget for the next year. And I've also been going through our financial policies and updating them as needed to reflect the law, and also some internal policies I've been going through and drafting some new ones that we didn't have.
Excellent. Thank you. Great job. Lynn? She loves this.
Pretty much just the same with me, you know? It's just court, town secretary, and permitting, so and code enforcement.
Okay. And anything else, Chris? Okay. All right. Public safety. Chief?
So a lot of council members have already mentioned the parade. It was my first time being a part of that, and great job by the Double Oak Volunteer Fire Department putting that together. I want to thank our Double Oak Reserve Police Officers that came out and gave us a hand with traffic control and safety on a pretty warm day to be wearing body armor. So thanks to them. A great event, and you can tell that you all been doing it for a while because things went off, to my knowledge, without a hitch, so that was very cool. Other than that, we're working on getting everybody's T-CO mandated training wrapped up before the end of the two-year T-CO training cycle. We had two officers attend advanced law enforcement rapid response training last week, and I think we're pretty close to having everybody completed. End of August is when the training cycle is completed, so we're hoping to have everything wrapped up in the next couple weeks.
Excellent. Chief, come on up.
Well, I thought I was going to be quick, but after all the info that's been said, I have a feeling this is going to be longer than usual. The parade, yes, anything that's happened like the week before, I think we handled it while we had vendors call and say, hey, we can't help you this year, like three days out, so then there's like a scramble to get things.
Oh, wow.
Y'all didn't know, so they don't need to pull it up. Lots of thank yous. I mean, I think this is why, if you volunteered, I thought I saw you in a volunteer shirt. Mayor Johnson, you already mentioned that you were out there with Mary. Kelly, you were there doing Vol of Life with Lieutenant Raul, I think he gave away sixty-five of them. And I promise me, if I hear more people, I can get hold of you, and you'll get hold of them, and we'll figure out how to like install the system and get it repaired. So that one awesome, you're able to agree. You should have seen all the swag that she got. I mean, including gun locks. That's nothing to be wild with. Let's see who else. Chief Miller.
Yeah.
I had that actual the other day, like, he's got people shitting off on the floors, and they were all there to help make things work. So, I guess they could have all of that, or just big thanks was my number one thing today. We got in the roof. We had multiple hail damages that finally just accumulated to the point where we did one, and one of our captains kept on there with the help of Chris, kind of worked through the insurance process, and I think it was last week, and one day they got to a rock, they got to do one on, and let's hope for all of our safety on wood. We tell you another big hailstorm, or we got to go through this again. It's June, end of June, so I've kind of got like, try to do like quarterly-ish, so like maybe an halfway point where we are. Sent this to the mayor earlier. Total calls a hundred and fifteen, so extrapolate that out, that's two hundred and thirty for the year, which is right about our average. We use a figure two twenty to two fifty. For over thirteen hundred training hours in our volunteer hours, over three thousand of volunteer hours, not count time on calls, and not count the time on training, so it's everything besides those two. And then last one, we did TCC training, both on two-story structure fires, and certain nursing techniques, how to try and get some weight twice my size out of a window, for those kinds of things, a lot of quality.
Wow.
And we awarded Zane Powell, who lives in a local black home.
Awesome. All right.
The helipad. I just figured I'd do that one last, because I always say, like, hey, if y'all would think about like your elderly parents or whatever, and if you have any questions, I just figured I'd bring a helipad and then say, if you have any questions, I'm standing right here. Yes, we attended a meeting with the mayor, and honestly, I don't remember who else. I know that we homeowners were there. Our perspective was, we were invited to come be a citizen of Double Oak, who were looking at doing something potentially distinctly different with this property, and there's going to be multiple homes potentially, potentially landing zone, and if we want to hear him out, and if we have any concerns, then as the process worked on, we can share our opinion. Is it safe or not? Are there any major concerns? This day, I don't think there's any reason for us to do anything else because nothing's happening yet. Our first major concern is to give you an idea of the kind of thing we might be thinking of, and it's like, are you going to store fuel in there? Because it hasn't. At least at the time of the discussion, again, nothing's been filed, no, no fuel was going to be stored there. There wasn't going to be a structure that we had to protect there. It wasn't going to be a big square concrete, so beyond that, not my business. I don't design helipads, I don't approve helipads. I've only stood on a couple of helipads, one on a rescue of someone that was dying, and one that was flying to the ground. So I'm not your man when it comes to helipads. You want to know why I didn't come up here during one of my monthly things and bring it up? Because my job isn't to share with all of you every potential safety thing that goes on in this town. There are a bunch of you in this town that would not want me to do that, because if I did that, I'd be standing here and say, one of your daughters is driving drunk, she caused a car wreck, her car was flipped over. You want to know who it was? Because she's unsafe in this town. There's some of you that, when you're not on your meds, that we show up to your house, become violent. You want me to share that every time? There's a lot of gray area that you're going to open Pandora's box if you all of a sudden expect me to come up here every month and share something I potentially might know becomes potentially dangerous. It's not my job. These folks up here were doing their job, following the process, as far as I understand it, and again, I'm not, as fire chief, an expert in all the things the town council is required to do by the town, or the state, or the country. So please don't bespurt me or my fire department by saying, I should have come up here and told you something. I shouldn't have come up here and told you something. My job is to protect your innocence to everybody else. I don't share medical things, I don't share who got wrecked, et cetera, or helipads. So regarding helipads, if at any point someone would like, we had one opinion, whether I think it's safe or not, I'd be glad to ask one of our other chiefs to do some research. Once it's been filed, and we get to the point where we may actually need to discuss that, at that point, I'll give it. Otherwise, please don't post on social media about being at the fire department and stuff that you're not going to come talking about, because as far as I know, before anything I posted on social media, no one came to the fire department and said, should I speak to the chief about the helipad? Instead, people went on social media and just started this. Keyboard warrior. I'm not a keyboard warrior. Some of you might have noticed that I didn't go on or respond on behalf of the department or on behalf of me as a citizen. I could have said, okay, I'm not chief right now, I want to make my personal feeling about the helipad, haven't done that either. Instead, here I am, and I'll be next door after training. If you want to come talk to me about the helipad, we can. Kind of a problem. Just don't be keyboard warrior about it. Come talk to me and ask my opinion. Thank you. Do you all have any questions for me regarding Fourth of July, helipads, Vial of Life, anything?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am?
Excuse me, I've heard that the mic is moved.
There's a problem in the back because it was working forward.
Okay, well, I just.
Thank you. Okay, I was laughing. I mean, not for the internet, but thank you. Yes, ma'am?
How many sites in the Louisville Fire Mountain area are there places where quite life can be?
I don't know yet. The fire department would probably have made its own spot.
Well, I know, I know there's a lot of them that they already know where to go. I do know that by experience that we're running, and I knew that they knew where to go. So there's a lot of, a lot of that we need helipads, so that we have, I don't see it necessarily under any desert area that's going to need helipads.
Yes, we all know, yes, there's places that we know helicopter station, we all saw one land, you know, again, type of different kinds of helicopters. Was one that I knew is one of them all the same as one that would land in case of an emergency? No idea what kind of emergency is it? Is it medical? Is it something else? Is it a fire, and we're going to bring in something that's going to dump five hundred gallons of water? I don't know, so I can't answer. I can tell you that on the spot, if we had to, somebody could probably tell us, like, we need a spot that's big, and even that two-wheel, those church over here, parts of us are pretty big, may not be the most needed spot, but.
Well, another thing is a medical helicopter, that's all, everything all it needs to save somebody's life, give it to a hospital. Personal helicopter doesn't have that. It's no benefit.
Probably not, because again, I jumped on a helicopter, so who knows what my helicopter brings in, although I would agree with you generally, it's probably not kind of a helicopter. Who knows?
First of all, I'm going to drop off, I'm going to take one helicopter drop. First of all, I'm not questioning the council procedure, but I have a question about state identity S U P.
Point of origin.
Sorry?
Point of origin.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry.
No.
No, you're responding to the chief, but I do want you to ask the question at the planning and zoning hearing. Yes, I do need you to ask the question during the, it's just that it's the proper place. So. And after the meeting, if you want, if we could talk briefly, just so I can explain that a little bit more detail for you. Okay. But I do want to hear from you, and the planning, I don't even want to hear from you. Chief? Thank you.
Oh, just the other last thing is, I will keep you all, or please let you know if you want to let me know, we raise our hands to go down to all the.
Yes. Please.
Right now, they're asking for a type of vehicle that not every fire department has.
Right.
So they changed it to something we do have, but we're kind of constantly honoring. We have to propose to consent Friday, but then we need two other people that we do for next week, we're available, start the process, they're aware of it. TM, Texas Department of Urban Management, they probably seen ahead of TM, talking a couple times on the news. They know what apparatuses we have, and that we've got staff, so it's already, it's that they don't have to ask, can you, they already know, yes, we can. We're just going to follow it, so.
All right. Chief? Okay. Yes, please, and be safe.
Chief? Do you know if there is, if they're needing things, like, are there fire departments that are needing things that we as a town could participate in donating? I mean.
I haven't dug into it from the little bit. I saw like, kind of like, multiple like signup lists, and like, it becomes a mess, which is kind of counter to it, but a lot of times people would show up to volunteer, and it actually makes things worse, because now you've got people running around, and you don't know, like, which group are you with? And chief's nodding his head. And so like, we actually had a couple of our members do this once, I can't remember what the disaster was, but they went on their own, not representing us in one of our vehicles. And they were kind of told, like, hey, we appreciate it, but you didn't come with it.
Right.
How do I know what you like, and how do I keep track of you? And they should know better, and so it helped educate our department not to do that. And I think a lot of that's what's happening right now. And they're trying to now build the infrastructure, which is like, took three days for two days, maybe for TM to start figuring out, here's what we need.
Right.
So that I can raise my hand and say, you have one, or wait for your ready. Start to, you're nodding your head, leaning toward the microphone.
I was in charge of the city's response when the city of Raleigh was hit by an F-four tornado several years ago, and I can tell you that the first twenty-four to forty-eight hours are pretty much chaos, and that one of the biggest problems that we had was unsolicited help showing up. It, we actually had to shut down our mobile command post and bring our command post inside because we were just inundated with people that were trying to donate water, trying to help out, single first responders showing up saying, where do you need me? So, yeah, absolutely. do you need me? So, yeah, absolutely, though, until they get a chance to wrap their heads around what they actually have going on down there, and, and then they'll, they'll reach out once they know what they need.
Yeah. I was laughing, because I was on a wildland deployment, and then it got turned into something bigger, and people started showing up with water. They'd pull up in their car, with their, like, trunk, just fill the water, and they stopped at Walmart. And it was awesome, because people were like, you know, digging into their own pockets, bring what they thought people need, because it's a hundred degrees, and you're out the field, and the fence is on fire, and all this stuff. And they're like, what do you want to do with it? And I'm like, I'm busy trying to figure out what's going on. I don't know what to do with seventeen cases of water. And they're like, yeah, my sister's coming to war. And you're like, great, drop it on the ground. Because now your car's in the way, on top of everyone else.
Right.
But I appreciate the question about what can be done. I would say just keep an eye out on the standard places, right? And then the Salvation Army's, and whoever else that they usually gather, still gather, conglomerate, and deliver versus having thousands of cars. And if I hear something where we can be that center all the time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry to take up so much time.
No.
Sausage on a stick is still the best deal you got. Right? You eat one of those, you don't need to eat the rest of the day.
Yeah.
It just sits right there.
It'll go hard, and then go on.
Chief, I appreciate you taking your time tonight. I know you got training going on. Thank you for taking and stating, making the statements that you did. We appreciate that very much.
I think there is a support, whether you just find out a bid, or whether you hope you're part of the community. This is my, someone else left these up here, so if you are still here, I'll deliver to you. How about that on my way out? Thanks, Ed.
Thank you. All right, next up on the list is the Roads Committee.
Hopefully, next meeting, we'll have something.
Okay.
Right, Chris?
Yes. Drainage Committee.
Nothing.
All right. We're going to move on to New Business Agenda. Item 12, Discuss/Consider and Act on Adopting Resolution 25-02, the Town of Double Oak Public Funds Investment Policy. Presentation by Chris Luggenauer and Laura Mylinger.
Yes, as I mentioned at the last meeting, Laura and I attended the Required Texas Public Funds Investment Act, of which they shared with us the importance of updating our investment policy each year. They recommended a few changes, so Laura did a great job in terms of updating ours. We have run this proposed policy by the instructor that taught us, just to make sure we didn't miss anything. And it's also been reviewed by our attorney as well. Just to highlight, the primary objectives of the policy are, as it relates to our investments, are the safety of principal, liquidity, and yield. The other major part of this that is included in the policy that we learned about in the trading is the ability to go to what are called investment pools. I talked a little bit about that a couple weeks ago, but at, as needed and where it makes sense to do so, the state offers some investment pools. The benefit of that is you do get the, the high yield along with the, along with the liquidity. It's not like you're stuck with a CD, where you have to keep it for six months before you, you pull anything out. With these statewide investment pools, it's a hundred percent liquid. You can get it whenever you need it. So, we made sure that the policy was written to take advantage of that, should we decide to go in that area.
Okay. Thank you. Council questions? I just had one, really, it's more of a statement, is, the town's always just relied upon certificates of deposit for our fund balances. And then every, what, once a year, two times a year, we would look at the yield, and we would decide if we're going to stay with the credit union or the bank. And so, this does give us an opportunity to possibly get higher yield off of our fund balances. But the key here is that when they're, when they're sitting in a certificate of deposit, as you all know, you can't touch it without a penalty. If the town ever needed it, we couldn't go get it. I mean, we could, but it would cost us. In this instance, it, it gives us a lot more flexibility, and so, we're going to do a lot more research on it before we do anything. Of course, it'll come to this council, it'll come to a public hearing in terms of allowing you to, to come up and ask questions about it. But I really appreciate the work that you've done. So, council, any other questions?
My only other one on this is, as you look at that tax pool, is it insured in some way, or is it going to fluctuate with the markets and potentially hurt us?
They fluctuate, but per the policy, I believe that the pool has to be, it's either double A or triple A rated. So, it's a very safe investment that, that these pools use.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we'll, obviously, we'll do, we're going to crawl, walk, crawl, walk, run with this before we do anything. We may not do nothing. So, council, is there any further discussion? Is there a motion?
I move that we act on adopting the Resolution 25-02 for the Town of Double Oak Public Funds Investment Policy.
Is there a second?
I second.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Wellen, a second by Councilperson Favaro. Lynn, can you please call a vote?
Mr. Gortney?
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Ms. Wellen?
Aye.
And Dr. K?
Aye.
All right, the item passes. Thank you, council. Item 13, Discuss/Consider an Act on an Interlocal Agreement with Denton County Tax Assessor Collector's Office. Presentation by Chris Luggenauer.
Yeah, we just recently received this from the Denton County Tax Assessor's Office. It is the rate that we're charged each year for the tax office. Again, that's for the calculation of the taxes, the invoicing, the tax collection side of the property tax process. The rate over the last several years has been one dollar per parcel. They have not increased it. They probably should have over the years, but they haven't, so they are going from one dollar to a dollar forty-one cents. So, on a percentage-wise, that's a pretty big dollar amount. However, the, it is a smaller contract. The total contract price, even with the, at the dollar forty-one rate, is still just seventeen hundred dollars. But given the fact of what it's for and the large increase, I wanted to bring it to council for your, your review and approval.
I wish we could say we just didn't want to participate in it at all.
And, I'm sorry, this, this would be part of the 25-26 budget. It doesn't impact current fiscal year budget.
Right. So, for those of you, we have twelve, we have twelve hundred and twenty-five taxable parcels in Double Oak, that, that we, we collect ad valorem tax on each and every year. And, and many of those actually, depending upon the tenure of where you're at in life, we've got the over sixty-five exemption, we have the Double Oak Home Stat exemption, and of course, you have the, the Texas State Home Exemption, that, that all impacts the amount that you all get, receive in the, what is it, usually March, April? It's always a fun one to get. What this is, this seventeen hundred dollars, it's basically, it's our administrative portion of paying to have all of the tax collection calculations done. So, every town, every municipality has to pay a share based upon the number of parcels. We had a mayor's meeting a month ago, and Don Spencer from Denton County District came up and spoke to us, and he gave everybody a heads up that there would be a little bit of, of a bump versus the way it, it was before. Thus, the forty-one cent increase. So, we knew going into this, we were just kind of waiting for the bill. So, I don't know if that fosters any questions, council, or if there's anything else you want to inquire about.
I mean, it just makes sense, right? This is, you're talking about stamps and, or, you know, their mailing and collections and all sorts of, yeah, so seventeen hundred dollars off of how much they collect for, for us is what, over a million, I think, right?
Yes, it's well over.
So, I mean, if you, if we did it ourselves, you couldn't even come close to that kind of...
And like I said, Chris, we didn't have to bring this to council, because it's under the two thousand first, but you know how we do it. Everything comes in front of the council, citizens, regardless of what, what amount it is. Is there any further discussion?
No.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the interlocal agreement with Denton County Tax Assessor Collector's Office in the estimated amount of one thousand seven hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Favaro, and a second by Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Dietrich. Lynn, can you please call a vote?
Dr. K?
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich?
Aye.
Ms. Wellen?
Aye.
Mr. Gortney?
Aye.
All right, the item passes. Thank you, council. We're just about ready to wrap up. We have, I just want to get the, make sure we're, the date's right. We have another council meeting on the... Twenty-first.
You can't do math.
Then the planning and, the planning and zoning to hear the heliport, which we want everybody to come and be a part of, and ask the questions. There'll be presentation by the, the Two Fifty Simmons as well, is on August seventh. And then, the meeting after August seventh, which would be August eighteenth, is the next council meeting. So, depending upon how the planning and zoning goes, there may be, it may be brought into the August eighteenth meeting, portions of it may, some of it may not. If anything is still outstanding, it would then come to the first week of the month in September's council meeting to try and clear all of this up as quickly as possible. So, citizens, I appreciate your passion. I love the fact that we have, live in a country of First Amendment rights, freedom of speech, freedom of expression, which you've all done, and we do listen, and we do hear you. We just ask that you let the process go through, as we're all looking to do. And at the end of this, there will be decisions made by planning and zoning, there will be decisions made by the town council, and then it will be put to rest. So, I appreciate all your participation. I see some faces I haven't seen here before, and I thank you for coming. I've heard some voices tonight. I thank you for being here. And you are always welcome to be a part of our process here in governing this town. With that said, oh...
Just, just one quick announcement, because there was a public comment about P&amp;Z being on YouTube. Yes, they, that will be, the August seventh meeting will be on YouTube, and I promised to fix the audio problems that we were having tonight, so I apologize for that. But based on, we're, all future P&amp;Z meetings will be done on YouTube in the future.
Same with Board of Adjustment.
And Board of Adjustments, yes. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Okay. Yeah, we appreciate you bringing that up. So, with that said, it is now seven fifty-seven. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.